Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting of Tuesday, June 18th. My name is Jim Lee Han. I'm joined by my fellow board members, Mr. Roach and Ms. Mecklenburg. Please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. This meeting is on Norfolk Cable Live. Finally, we apologize for a little bit of a delay, but we had a few technical difficulties. We are going to start with a public hearing. We get these, this poor gentleman, so he gets a chance to go home. The notice for the public hearing is longer than the actual meeting will take. That unfortunately is the rule, but do I have a motion to go into, open the public hearing? Mr. Roach?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. The purpose of the public hearing is as follows.
The Select Board of the Town of Norfolk will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Chapter 166, Section 22 of Mass. General Laws by petition for Verizon, New England Incorporated, and Eversource Energy and Star Electric for joint pole location. To grant petitioners joint or identical locations for the permission to erect, maintain poles, wires, and cables together with anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan marked VZNE Inc., Plan Number 1A6MW7U dated April 29, 2024, filed with herewith upon along and across the following public way or ways of said town. Hunter Ave, one jointly owned pole number T-12/E-12 on the west side of Hunter Ave at the point intersection, 229 feet approximately northwestly of the center line of Litchfield Ave, 150 feet northwest of existing pole T-11 and E-11. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Petitioners agree to reserve space for one cross arm at the suitable point upon each of said poles for telephone, fire, and police signal wires belonging to the town and used by the municipal purposes. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Meeting Room 24 on Zoom Online.
Thank you very much, sir. We have a representative from Verizon. Welcome, sir.
Hi there. You like me?
Come on up. Yep, just for the microphone for the host at home.
You nailed it, Mr. Roach.
Yeah.
Dave Taupum from Science Engineering, representing Verizon Communications. For the Hunter Ave project that Mr. Roach just went over, the reason for it is, the request is necessary to accommodate new construction at Ten MacArthur Ave and to provide for the distribution of intelligence, telecommunications, and the transmission of high and low voltage electric. Current, I did a site visit, the house is up, conduit is in the pole location where they propose it, and it's ready to go.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
No, I just wondered what Blair was doing in Newfoundland, because his email was from Canada.
I know Blair is, is Blair on? He is not. Blair has, I know, given us note agreeing with this, so no further questions. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
It is a public hearing. My apologies. Does anyone in the audience wish to make any comments regarding the location of this pole? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve? I will.
We have to close first?
No.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I have to abstain from this vote.
I move that we approve this poll.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
You abstain.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move so moved.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Unfortunately, we have to go through this again. You're up.
I'll do the best I can. The Select Board for the Town of Norfolk will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Chapter 166, Section 22 of the Massachusetts General Laws on a petition from Verizon, New England Incorporated, and Eversource Energy and Star Electric for joint pole location to grant petitioners joint or identical locations for and permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables together with anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan marked VZNE Incorporated, Plan Number 1A6PQ1K, dated April 29, 2024, filed herewith upon along and across the following public way or ways of said town. Lawrence Street, place one jointly owned pole number T.27A/E.27A on the north side of Lawrence Street at a point approximately 43 feet westerly of the center line of Brett's Farm Road and 130 feet westerly of existing pole T.27/E.27 and 60 feet easterly of existing pole T.28/E.28. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersection public, intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distribution purposes. Petitioners agree to reserve space for one cross arm at suitable point of each of said poles for the telephone, fire, and police signal wires belonging to the town and used by it for municipal purposes. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, that's today, at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., as well as via Zoom online video conferencing remote access.
Well done. You're up, sir.
Great. Thank you. I might start bringing you with me to those meetings. And I'm still Dave Taupum. The reason for this request is to accommodate new construction at Waits Crossing and to provide for the distribution of intelligence, telecommunications, and the transmission of high and low voltage electric. Waits Crossing is a new development off of Lawrence Street.
Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
I will second. Are you a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion to close the public hearing.
We lost our...
Oh, we'll still close the public hearing.
Yes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I'm gonna take my lollipop, head back to Plymouth. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome. Good night. Be careful.
Did anyone shoot out the gremlins before they?
Probably the poll hearing that shut it down would be my best guess.
Burn some sage. Oh, something's happening. Oh, then it went away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologize for the delay, but we do have to wait as the next section is public comment, and there may be someone in the Zoom capacity here that has some comments, so need to give this an... Oh, you came back quickly and went away quickly.
There, it's looking good.
Let me see if he's coming back.
Yay.
Yeah, I think it does fall.
Okay, I think we got it.
There we go.
Okay. Great, thank you. This is an opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to make a public comment, we offer the opportunity for up to three minutes. Please come up to the stage here or stage. Please come up and grab a seat. Give your name and your address, and we will welcome your comments. We have, we'll start over here. Thank you. Phyllis?
Hello, shall I do the mic?
Absolutely. It's for the folks at home.
Right. My name is Phyllis Payne. I'm a Norfolk resident. I was at a meeting last night, and Kevin Roach was there, so thank you very much for being there, Kevin, and I'd like to thank the board very much for all that you're working hard on with regard to the shelter that is happening. I'd like to make what I think are a couple of positive comments. It seems to me that the state has left us with a lot of questions unanswered, and in response to that, I think we should make our own list of what we'd like the state to do for us. And to start, my husband has made some suggestions, which I think are very reasonable, of things that we could ask the state for. Of course, they could always say no, but if you don't ask, you don't find out. So these are my suggestions from my husband, that the state should fund and staff another ambulance to assist pregnant women as needed, that the state should rent and staff a mobile classroom for the migrant children, and that the state should fund in advance of September a school opening, language teachers for non-English speakers K through 12 as necessary, and include bilingual special ed. teachers, and also that the state should appropriate money in advance for appropriate books for K through 12. And I'm sure there are probably many other requests that you and possibly Norfolk residents would like to make of the state. Thank you for considering these proposals. In addition, I have some questions, and that is, there are other towns who have done this in the same way with state facilities. So I'm wondering, you know, how they succeeded to manage serving a large number of migrants whom the state has placed in their facilities and their tents. How did they accommodate all their needs? How did they manage their budgets? Did they raise taxes and cut services to current residents? Did the state compensate them in a way that covered the additional costs? Did they provide help with the additional medical and security needs? If they did, how did they successfully negotiate those terms with the state, and what can we learn from them? Thank you very much again. This is, I understand this is very challenging, and I understand that we don't have a lot of choices in this, but we can ask questions and we can let them know what our needs are, because we have needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It has been a couple of weeks now since the town forum regarding the temporary emergency shelter at Bay State. I feel that meeting was a waste of time as far as gaining useful information went. The two prescripted responses were working on that. We'll look into that. Did not make sense 10 days before they were planning to move in. The one thing the town forum showed were how many people are frustrated with the situation, not because they are racist or unloving or against immigrants, but because they see the reality of the situation. It is financially unsustainable. I appreciate that you, the Select Board, are not paid for your services, yet you are still willing to serve and have been thrust into an unexpected situation that has taken much of your time. However, please remember that you were elected to represent the best interests of the citizens of Norfolk. To shelter migrants in Bay State was an executive decision. I know it's facetious, but I can't but help but wonder if the state decides with no consideration of the town to put 450 people in their facility because they own it, does the town have to serve them? Why is there not more pushback? There are too many unanswered questions. Do you have the answers to all the questions that were brought up at the town forum? At this point, it is hard to believe anything Governor Healy and her representatives say. To say all coming to the shelter have been vetted, what does vetted mean? To say all have had background checks, how do you run background checks on people coming from other countries with no information? It was said all shelters are 50% mass homeless residents and 50% migrants. This has not been true in other shelters. Also, I was told that homeless are coming from other states because of what they can get in Massachusetts. They are being called residents once they step into Massachusetts. If you are bargaining with the state to see what you can get for the town, that is wonderful, but remember, the funds will run out, but the homeless won't. They will become the town's responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other folks that would like to make public comment? Anyone on the Seeing none, we will close the public comment section. First action this evening, recognition of Micah Nelson and acceptance of a birdhouse donation. Anita?
Yes, Micah, do you want to come up? Yes.
Yes, we'd love to have you join us.
Say, what's your name?
And tell us where you live.
Norfolk.
Excellent. So Micah and his classmates have made and are donating a birdhouse to the community. Would you like to our community, and thanks for their education as I understand it from the letter. Do you want to tell us anything about it?
KP links?
It's just a program.
It's just a program that's done well by you, because you've made this generous donation to our community?
Yep, he made the birdhouse at school, and his last day was Friday.
Excellent, and he's partnering for people on the screen, he's partnering with our tree warden to find a perfect place to hang the birdhouse in recognition, and thank you for his education. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
Excellent. So we are honored to receive the birdhouse, and we feel very touched by your, your token of appreciation that you're showing us for your education, and we wish you the best future, the very best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should I keep this, or are you going to take it to the?
What do you want to do?
All right, we're gonna put it here in a place of honor for the whole evening, and then we'll make sure it gets to the tree warden.
Perfect.
Thank you. I'm sure he'll be in touch.
Yep.
Thank you. These, these type of recognitions are really special. That was really wonderful. Thank you, Micah, very much. Next on our list is, we wanted to recognize the Eagle Scouts. I don't know if they're here. Are they here this evening?
They're not.
I don't see any, but we do want to publicly recognize them. For those of you that have not seen the plaque that's on the wall out here on your way out, just take a look, because it's overwhelming. This troop has had just an incredible number of Eagle Scouts. The programs are just incredible, and these young men are incredible, and it's just an honor to be able to recognize them in all of the things that they do for our community and the wonderful work that they do. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Roach just to go through the five recipients, I believe it's five, that just had, and just highlight the projects that they were involved in to earn their final badge, which was quite a night.
Thomas's Eagle Scout Project was considered of installing a blessing box for the Federated Church of Norfolk. Thomas led the effort to relocate the garden and install a shed as a 24-hour pantry to allow those in need to access food, clothes, and personal items. Thomas coordinated with the church to raise the fund, purchase the shed, and accessories. The blessing box will continue to serve in the community for many years to come. In June 28, 2024, as Thomas Cambrella Day. Luca's Eagle Scout Project considered of designing, building, and installing five chair wings at the Leland Wildlife Preservation. The preservation is open to the public, and its purpose is to preserve the natural environment and promote the enjoyment of nature in all seasons. Luca, with his father and preserve administration, helped to fill his, fulfill his project along with his troop members and cross-country team. This will allow the public to enjoy nature in a new way and... Okay. June 27, as Luca Cambrella Day. Alden's Eagle Scout Project considered of Alden designing and constructing seven feral cat shelters which were dispersed to the Mansfield Animal Shelter and throughout New England. The shelters aid in controlling the feral cat population though through a trap-neuter return program. In addition, Alden developed an informational brochure on feral cats to bring awareness to the commuter, community on how to care for them. The troop members constructed the shelters in, in the lower level of the Council of Aging under Alden's leadership. Alden's project was a lesson of leadership, teamwork, and power of community service for the cause that will leave a lasting impact on both cats and community. June 26, 24, as Alden Hotty Day. Christopher's Eagle Scout Project was creating a prayer garden on the previously overgrown area at his local church. Christopher developed sketches with his church clergy to place two benches and two Japanese maple trees. He organized his troop members who cleared the area and uprooted invasive weeds and ivory, which expanded the perimeter of the area for the garden. Christopher sourced the materials for the mediation area. Christopher's work, work will endure and develop in beauty as the trees grow and fulfill the scenery. June 25, 24, as Christopher Mosley Day. Jackson's Eagle Scout Project considered of building a 28 new tree stands for the Norfolk Lions Annual Christmas Tree Sale. Jackson managed the project from start to finish. This included a presentation for his proposal to the Lions Board organizing volunteers, assessing material needs, and order materials. Jackson was mindful to reuse any material he could find from the old stand to minimize waste. Jackson led volunteers from Troop 80 to disassemble the old stands and build new ones. The new stands were presented to the Lions in October and utilized last December sale. June 24, 24, as Jackson's Putt Day.
Thank you, sir. These young men are incredible, and we did want to recognize them as best we could here. I'm sorry they couldn't be here, but I don't blame them. But their feats are just incredible. So Ms. Mecklenburg represented the board at the award ceremony. I've done a number in the past. They are just phenomenal opportunities to say thank you and to recognize the tremendous young men that reached this achievement. So thank you, sir, for saying that, and to all of you, if you are listening and watching, thank you for all that you do.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. O'Brien, how are you this evening?
Doing great.
All right. We have a wedding ceremony. Can you give us some background on that, please?
Sure. So this event will have a total of 10 people. It will take place from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM on July 29. It's been cleared by the appropriate departments and public safety.
You have, we have information in our guest. Anybody have any questions? I don't think you were invited, but is it okay?
It's fine.
No questions?
No questions. I'm totally, what a beautiful place to be married.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Using unanimous phone. Ms. O'Brien?
So the farmer's market, so they have requested to use the town hill an hour earlier to allow for more time to set up. So the public hours of the market will remain the same, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. So they, they are asking for that hour extension.
Any questions?
No, public safety, thought it was fine. No, no other questions?
If you folks haven't gone up on the hill during farmer's markets, you should. It's really, really delightful evening. It's nice. They do a wonderful job.
We have representatives from the farmers market here, in case you have questions.
Just in case.
Well, you do do a wonderful job. Thank you. It's really a very nice time. Thanks. No further questions?
No further questions.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
That means not opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
Oh.
And I don't fault you for leaving.
No.
All right. Kate, we have some search contracts to award.
We do. So this next item is the DPW supply contract for fiscal year '25. It's a one-year period, and it's for materials such as stone, gravel, and concrete.
This is a standard practice that the DPW goes through. We're part of a consortium where we get reduced rates for some of these materials. Does anyone have any questions? No.
Not at all?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To consider appointments and reappointments of various boards, committees, and positions.
There's the big, beautiful chart.
They made that big so we could read it.
I love that.
One way that Amanda has suggested, and I think is an excellent suggestion, this is color-coded. So thank you for that. Whoever had that brilliant struggle, genius, we appreciate it. Thank you.
That was Judith. All Judith.
So the ones that are color-coded are pretty straightforward. I don't, you had a chance to look at them. I did. I certainly have no concerns with any of them, so we can make a motion, if you all agree, to approve all of the reappointments as so-coded on the sheet. Yellow.
Or, oh, sorry, I just want to say coded yellow for the terms listed.
Thank you for the amendment. All right, do I have a motion to do so?
I move to approve all the people coded in yellow for the terms listed to the committees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And before we move on, I just want to say Norfolk runs on volunteers. Like it's our volunteers that do this work and so thank you to all these people who are willing to either be reappointed or who are embarking on the journey of serving on a town committee and thank you very much, we couldn't do the work without you.
I don't know how many names are on this list, I didn't count it, but it's got to be 50, 60 names, somewhere in that range?
Around that, yeah.
I mean, all residents that are volunteering to serve on these boards, so thank you all very much. Thank you, Anita. We have some additional appointments that you have a side sheet on that are indicated in purple. They are indicated either because there are more than one candidate for any particular position or some various different circumstances for different issues, but we'll take them one at a time. On the housing authority, we do believe they have two folks here this evening. Mary Sadler, are you here this evening? Okay, Sarah Jennings here this evening.
They were invited.
They were invited, okay. We can table this at this point in time. Normally, we either get a recommendation from the board, which we have not, to my knowledge, and usually we get a chance to interview the candidate, so we will table this one. On Norfolk County Advisory Board, one opening. Kevin Calcut has been the member of that and I think he would like to continue. Kevin? Are you alive and well on that?
Sorry, yes, I'm at a Little League baseball game, but I am more than open to continuing to serve in that capacity should the board so choose. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I'd be thrilled to have him continue in that capacity.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I move to approve Kevin Calcut for the one-year appointment to the Norfolk County Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin, for continuing and good luck at the game. Community Preservation Committee, we have one opening and we have one candidate, Peter Diamond. He has served on the board in the past. We do not have a candidate, there are a number of ways these boards are filled, but in this case they are represented as from the various voting precincts. We have not had a candidate from precinct four and therefore we have the right as a board to appoint a what is known as a member-at-large to fill that position. Peter has served that position for the last year and he would like to continue and he would like to continue on a three-year term, which is the privilege of the board. So what is the privilege of the board?
I am fine with a three-year term.
That feels really appropriate. He's done a lot of hard work and I think it'd be nice to have him on that committee.
We have a motion to approve Peter Diamond for a three-year term?
So moved?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter. Master Plan Committee, Kevin, again, when he was on the board was the member that represented it, but that has to be a selectman, a select board member that serves on that board, so we need a volunteer. I was involved to a certain degree. I will defer to you if you would like to, or you can defer to me if you don't want to.
Or we could do rock, paper, scissors. I'm good either way, whatever you prefer, Jim. I would be happy to take it or I would be happy to have you have it. Either one would be fine with me.
Okay, it's getting towards the end of the process, anyway. I'll be happy to take it if that's agreeable with everybody.
That's fine.
Quite agreeable. Thank you.
You need to nominate me.
I nominate Jim, what's your name?
O'Brien.
Jim O'Brien, Jim Leahan, to serve on the Master Plan Committee from the select board, as a select board liaison.
I second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain officially. Municipal Housing Authority, we have two returning members and we have two candidates, again, for a one vacancy. I would propose that we vote this evening to appoint the two returning members, Mr. Cleverden and Mr. Conklin. And I believe Ms. Stewart is not available to come in this evening, so we will defer on the final appointment, but I would recommend if the board so agrees that we vote to approve the two returning members, Mr. Cleverden and Mr. Conklin.
I have no objection to that.
No objection.
Okay. So moved.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will table the remaining vacancy until we have a chance for the two candidates to come and join us.
And that's a two-year appointment, Amanda?
It is a two-year appointment, yes.
Okay.
I think that does it.
Yep, we're all set.
Okay. Well done. Thank you for the color coding and the large print.
Big thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Kate, place order grant application.
Yes, so the item in your packet is a contract with an engineering firm to complete the application process for a MassWorks grant. So the town is going for the maximum allowed $500,000. This will be for the evaluation and utilization of wastewater system options, so we're going to be exploring. One of the further evaluations we're doing is the MCI Norfolk Wastewater System, but as well as just general service area and associate flows and load research of trying to get that information. So the state notifies grant awardees beginning in September and October, so that's when we would be notified if we would win the grant. So I ask that the board consider authorizing the acting town administrator to sign the service agreement with Woodward and Curran for $5,000.
I think this is a huge benefit for the town, so I'm very, very excited about it. I think we are always looking for to add business to our tax base and this is one way to go at it, so I think it's an amazing opportunity and I thank the people who did, probably you and Justin who did the work on it, and Blair probably as well.
Blair Crane and also Rhett Charlan, you struck.
Excellent. So I think it's, I'm very excited about it. I think it's a real opportunity.
I'm fine with it, yes.
I would echo that, especially with the additional grant that we received for close to just under a billion dollars.
Yep.
So this does provide us an opportunity to seriously think through how we can expand that consideration from the plant that sits up on top of the hill and is used only to a minimum amount of its capacity. So I'm all for it. I'm actually all for any grant that the state will give us where we can get money to do something.
Absolutely.
Most irrelevant.
Half a million?
Absolutely. So I have a motion to approve?
I move to authorize the assistant, the acting town administrator to move on our behalf.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Enthusiastic aye.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody involved.
All right, Kate, you have dual hats.
Okay.
Kate is also, by the way, our assistant town administrator as well as our human resource director, so she wears two hats.
So tonight we have a memo from me kind of outlining the process that this HR audit undertook. So we did it, another grant, we had a community compact grant about a year and a half ago when I first started here. And basically they did an HR audit of all our policies, internal policies. So just due to our last update being quite a bit ago, we had a lot of policies that were out of date, both state and federal. So for those, we were given new model policies, which is right now, you know, with our best practice. We also were, took a look at a lot of our policies due with, you know, leave, so vacation and other things like that. So the first set of policies are the model policies, which are, these are just, again, we have to have legally. The second set are more of the policies of, you know, feedback we've gotten from staff being here. I will say there's about four policies that we have, we negotiated in the latest DPW and clerical union contract. But, you know, a lot of them are best practices, modernizing some of our hiring policies, you know, basic updates to really retain employees, but also attract employees for the future. I'm happy to answer if anyone has any.
I have a couple of questions if you have.
Go ahead.
Okay. It would be helpful to know what's changed.
Sure, sure.
Is it so overwhelming that you can't go through it and point out the changes? It would have been helpful to redline it for the differences?
Yeah.
Can you share what is significantly different?
I can, yep, yep. Actually, I can, I've been staring at them for long enough, so.
Because in reading through them, I can't tell that.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. So for the, I'll just go over the ones that we actually, you know, not the model ones, the ones that we revised. So the vacation one, the main change was we just updated the starting vacation for new hires. That has been around a week for a long time and going through the hiring process, it was just unable to hire anyone for one week, starting for their first year. So that was negotiated in the clerical contract too, and we want it for best practice, the same for non-union employees. So that was the one change for vacation, is the starting is two weeks, or I believe it's one, there's a year range on the policy. But the biggest trigger for that was just our struggle to hire on the vacation policy. So the personal time, the one change is we put a kind of a timeline in there, so when someone gets hired, that equals how many personal days they have. We just had very general language, you get three personal days for every employee, but if someone's hired, let's just say in June or in May, you know, we just had language that you get three personal days. So this breaks it up of when you're hired, you get hired in the beginning there, you get three, hired in the middle year, you get two, hired at the end, you get one. So really just kind of clarifying it and getting that language for employees. Again, that was from feedback from hiring supervisors. The earned personal time, that is a new policy. That is something we negotiated with the DPW and clerical unions and that is something that's, you know, kind of a pilot program that we put in there. So this is to kind of combat a lot of the, you know, abusive sick time. So the less sick time people use, they have a chance to earn an additional personal day the following year. And I believe, we have language in there saying that this is a pilot program, having it for three years, and from there we'll kind of assess after the three years if it's successful, we want to look at the data and things like that.
Question, Kate, is this the same language that's in the contract?
Exact same language. We want all the policies to be the same. Yep. Our sick leave buyback policy, that is another thing from feedback from employees who have been here for quite a bit, so we wanted to do something for them. Also, neighboring towns have a similar policy. So if you were here for 15 years and retire, you get a percentage of your sick time, we'll buy that back.
Unused sick time.
Unused sick time, yes.
Just clarify.
Thank you for clarifying.
You wouldn't have if you had.
No.
Question on that, Todd, maybe you can answer. Is that, I mean, obviously there's a financial consideration to that. Is that something that was accounted for in this year's budget?
Is this year's budget?
Yeah.
Nothing I'm aware of.
It won't take effect until the next fiscal, it won't be this fiscal year. It'll be the next fiscal year. So this is the first year where people can hopefully not call out sick and earn that time if they so choose. And then the next fiscal year would be the year we actually.
And it wouldn't grandfather in their old, like their unused sick time from fiscal year 2023 or something like that? Or does it start, does everybody start at zero or do you get, does it go back?
I'm not sure of your question, sorry. What did you say?
So let's say I've worked here for five years and I haven't taken any sick days at all and I have 20 unused sick days. With the adoption of this, do I get those 20 from the back or does everybody start with fiscal year 2025?
Oh, no, it includes employees who have our current totals. And it's, again, it's only for people who have been here for 15 years and are retired.
A small number of people.
Yes, yes. So this is to really, you know, again, retain employees, but also award employees who have been here for a long time and committed to the town. You know, one thing we did for the vacation is to concentrate on new hires and newer employees, so we want to do something to benefit employees who have been here for a long time.
Okay.
The paid holiday, again, we wanted to match the contracts, so we added Juneteenth for the non-union. For parental leave, this is a new policy for the town. What we did was we matched the Norfolk Teachers Contract. They give essentially 10 sick days to someone who is out on, you know, who's having a child or caring for a new child. So we wanted to match it for our employees, for the clerical, DPW, and non-union. This can't, you know, I will say it's also under the umbrella of FMLA. So this isn't, this is something someone has to sign up for, give doctors notes and signatures and things like that and information, and then, so they have to be under FMLA, so that means they have to be an employee for 12 months. So there are some standards to hear to when you can apply, when to supply to people. But basically, since the teachers contract, they had the 10 sick days for parental leave, that is something the town wanted to match. And last, certainly not least, is the retiree-intermediated employees insurance benefits. And all we did here, we didn't, you know, touch a contribution or we didn't touch anything, it was just adding the definition of retiree. That was the one thing missing from the policy. So for example, if someone started their career later, later in life and retired here, didn't retire though, they weren't in our Norfolk retirement system, they didn't work 10 years to become vested. So right now there's not language that says that you have to be a Norfolk County retirement, that you don't have to be in the system, it just says retire. So when people just leave, you know, the town still, because of lack of language, pays for their health insurance. So in this here, going forward, you know, you will have to meet the 32B retirement system, which is the law. We just didn't have that language in our policies. So here, there definitely could be a financial benefit of having the definition of retiree. Will not affect any current retirees or anything like that. Nope, this is, this is, you know, going to effect, my hope is the policy is going to affect July 1st.
Thank you.
And this is just adding the definition of retiree, so it's just one sentence. And that is it.
That's it? Okay.
Sue has a question.
Questions, Nina?
I don't have any questions, they're answered. Sue is raising her hand, I don't know if you want to entertain.
Is it?
I just have a question.
Go ahead, Sue.
It's, thank you, Kate, for going through all that.
We'll break protocol here.
Putting all that together.
Yeah, come up to Mike.
Thank you, Kate, for doing that. I just have a question on the parental leave, which I applaud that, I think it's something that is really needed. Does it go along the same lines as the FMLA if someone were taking care of an ill child or an ill parent?
Yes. So FMLA does, but for this, it's specifically about parental leave. Some things we have talked about in, you know, for the future is kind of bridging this with, you know, instead of just parental leave, it just being paid family leave for two weeks, for 10, you know, 10 days. This really expands it if we were to look into that because, again, right now, it would only affect people giving birth or, you know, caring for a new birth of a child. Expanding it to paid family leave, obviously we would not do the entire 12 weeks that the state has and everyone else has, but it would be those two weeks, a very small, but, you know, good first step for family leave. So it's definitely something I think, I know.
Yes, we've talked about it before. I would love to see us expand, assuming we can afford to expand the family leave, and it might be an excellent use of our new forecasting tool to say, what do we see, the impact of this? And I don't know where you get the figures, but I'm sure that other people know, but I'm excited about expanding it to that because you want to treat your employees well and if you have an ailing parent, I understand that and hopefully.
We have a couple, a little bit more work to do for that, you know, work with Todd about the forecasting, as you said, but it's definitely something we're, you know, we're looking into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Kevin, any questions?
No.
No questions, this is overdue and I think that one of the things I've been pleased about is how we're lining everything up and everybody, there's equity across non-contract, contract, and looking across other towns that we're starting to be competitive in that way, so I'm excited to have this last little, not the last, not the last, but this next step of buttoning some things up that are cleaner and more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
Okay, I'm fine with this as well. I just, you know, the obvious, it's not necessarily a watchout, but it's something we have to pay attention to, is that all of these things have a price to it. And we need to be sure that we understand that, have a good understanding, and that it fits within our operational considerations. I'm all for the uniformity, I'm all for these kinds of privileges, but we have to also understand the financial impact of these, so as long as we're doing that and due diligence So as long as we're doing that and due diligence is being done, these are good things. But it's not an endless, the bucket does have a limit.
Right, right. Understood.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
I believe this is an action item, is it not?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt the updated human resource policy?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Kate. Hard work.
Thank you. A lot, and it was overdue. So thank you, thank you.
Hard work.
All right.
Welcome, sir.
We have Todd and Mark.
It's you.
Third quarter financial update.
Thank you for having me. Just want to go over a third quarter financial update, including revenues as well as our revenues expenditures compared to budget. I believe you have the two worksheets.
Do.
We do.
First one we'll do is the revenues. It's like this.
It's kind of small.
It is small.
Yep. We can print on a bigger paper next time.
We have older eyes. They're a little older.
No problem.
They're still highly functioning, just older.
So as of March 31st, 2024, similar to what I've done in quarters past, it's basically to highlight some of the trends that are a little bit better or worse, given the constraints of where we are with the overall budget. Based on the information and the actuals received, as of March 31st, these are all the values that we have as of March 31st. And obviously, we have a couple more months that have been included in there. So the trend is, you know, we're on pace with the budget constraints, nothing that's really an outlier per se overall. There are a few items I'd like to highlight, though. So personal property, real estate, again, the trend on all those, they're coming in right about 75% where they need to be. There's some higher, some lower. You know, tax liens, I don't account for those. So having an extra $81,000 is always helpful. Getting into local receipts, though, you know, excise tax, we don't assess those till the third quarter anyways. So second quarter, there was a very low number in there, but now we have a million seven, which is on track to hit the million nine mark that we budgeted for. Meals tax, currently at 72,393 as of March 31st. The trend, if I was to extrapolate that out through the end of the year, we're approaching about 90,000 to 95,000. And having a budget of 80,000 gives us about an extra $10,000 or $15,000 there, which is good. The other items I want to talk about, the lease with the MECC, I budgeted 90,000. Again, that's going to probably come in close to 95,000, 100,000, so another $5,000 to $10,000 more there. Transfer station, always been a hot topic. Many years ago, we started to watch the transfer station, made changes to some of the rates, did better analysis to do year-over-year trends and see how things were playing out. The bridge or closing the gap year-over-year is getting closer and closer. The fact that, you know, this year, we budgeted 275,000. I'm showing 170,000 as a 331. Running the report today, we have 256,000. So we're just a hair shy of where we anticipate for the overall budget.
That's great.
And I'll quickly go over the expenses for, might as well do it while I have here. So 256 for revenues on the transfer, budget of 275. We need about another $18,000 over this month, which I anticipate to probably get to that revenue mark. Expenses overall for the transfer station, we budgeted 444,000, year-to-date, 328, which trend is about 73%. So we have 116,000 available in the actual expenditures of the transfer station. Those numbers aren't up there. Sorry. So I just printed those off today, just to give you a quick update on the transfer station. The other items, licenses and permits, as of 331, we have 511. Budget was 485, so we've already exceeded that, which is a great thing. And then the investment income.
Ooh, I know.
So I budgeted 25,000, it's at 253,661 now. Again, a lot of that has to do with the monies that we were carrying onboard with the construction of the fire station as that expenses are being incurred, the monies are coming out. So the trend of the investment income will start to go down. That still has to be allocated out amongst water and CPC funds at the end of the year, but fingers crossed, market's doing very well for us. Ambulance, again, that's a transfer from ambulance receipts. So three quarters of that has been assessed as a 331. And miscellaneous, you know, we budgeted 225,000. We got prison mitigation monies in, we have a house sale that was in there, as well as a few other miscellaneous items, which accounts for the 505,000. State aid lines up where they need to be as far as revenues coming in with what our expectations are, as well as the assessments that are being done from the state. And then the free cash and transfer for special revenues, which is basically the ARPA monies that we're getting from county, as well as the use of our own ARPA monies to tighten up the budget for the year. So overall, those are kind of the highlighted items that I wanted to provide to you guys. If you have any questions on the revenues themselves, happy to answer those.
Is this the last year of ARPA?
Yes.
That's what I.
Yeah, it is.
So we have to commit by December 31st, 2024, expend by the 26th, all ARPA monies. And we're having a discussion on Thursday with the county on the ARPA project that we're going to be doing, which is the Secon Culvert for a good portion of the county funds.
I went through this over the weekend in trying to find something that I could query you on, and I couldn't find anything that was of value to query you on. You did a nice job. The numbers are good.
Thanks.
Right where they should be.
It's not me, it's the department heads. They don't agree.
The numbers are, but the point is they're right where they should be. Yes, that's always good news. Just one question, when we get to year end, we have several major projects, fire coming out of the system. I know these are, you know, preliminary bills that are coming out here shortly. With the new rule of 2.5%, there's not going to be a dramatic change for folks on this bill, but there will be for the second, two bills.
So what's not included on that change is the change for the fire station. So that will come November, December, when we sit down and have the tax rate classification hearing. We'll have the numbers from the town meeting of May, plus the town meeting of November. The impact right now on the average $680,000 Norfolk home will probably be close to the 500,000, I mean, 500,000, $500 per tax bill that we anticipated.
That was no Freudian slip, that, right?
No Freudian slip whatsoever, so we'll take it all. If you want to pay it, send us the checks, but no. So it's $500 on the average tax bill is what the anticipation is. I can do a calculation and put it up as a little news blurb in our next newsletter.
When we do the tax hearing, I think it would be helpful to have all of that information for folks. When is Tribe County going to show up? Any estimate?
Won't be until the following year. We have a small assessment this year, but that's on their amounts for the startup on the debt. Their next assessment won't be until next budget year.
Didn't they get a big grant?
Well, that's this year, right. But that's the overall project, which includes all the money that they're going to be borrowing to start this, this year was the startup monies. So we hit a small amount, which is included in the budget item that we've already approved at the.
We've got some work to do to figure out how to fit that in, how we're going to handle it. Because it is going to be a variable number.
Mm-hmm. Depending on the number of students each year.
Well, I think it's a minimum of four.
Five for debt, I think.
Is it five? Okay.
Dover doesn't like it because they only have two.
And I think we have, what, 10, 12, something like that?
11.
11, 10 to 12, pretty good guess.
So going on to the next sheet, so this is the revenues at the top, kind of went over that in detail. This is a recapture of, that was revenues in the standard format that I've always done as far as quarterly updates. Again, the reevaluation of how the revenues were coming in was brought on by COVID and its related issues, and making sure that we were anticipating on receiving revenues as budgeted originally during that time. So it's a good analysis as well, broken out a little bit more. So this is a little bit more condensed. But again, revenues are on track. Expenditures, far right column, you want to see 75% or less typically. There's going to be a couple outliers, that's the benefits and insurance. You have to pay that upfront July 1st for the, so majority of expenses are already paid upfront. And there's some debt items, the debt service for exempt is already kind of encapsulated in that. But the non-exempt, we have payments in April, May, and June, which will eat up basically the balance of that 633, 231 that we have allocated, 370,000 as a 331. So again, the trend is good. Human services, a little bit high, but I'm not overly concerned. I did check on salaries and expenses within the departments, and they should end up the year on track. And other departments are coming in or under where they need to be for the end of the year.
That's amazing.
Questions?
No.
My one observation, it was helpful to look at it 2023 compared to 2024, so thank you for including that. And it was interesting to see the use of restaurants has radically changed. And so that's really exciting, like, it almost, it almost feels like COVID is in the rearview mirror.
Sure.
So that, I thought that was really nice. Thank you for preparing this.
Absolutely.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, general updates, Kate.
All right, so tomorrow, town offices will be closed.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
But I do want to note that because of the heat emergency, the heat, the weather, the senior center will remain open. So they're going to be open from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And they will serve as a cooling center for all residents who need it, no matter what age, everyone is welcomed. They are located at 28 Midway Branch Road. Another update I have, just generally, some updates regarding the temporary shelter situation. So the school just announced today that they're holding a public session, and they're calling it the Bay State Emergency Overflow Shelter Parent Information Session. And that will be on July 11th, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at King Philip Middle School. I also wanted to add that internally, you know, we'll be meeting with the state and their task force this Thursday. We'll also be meeting with the providers. We'll be getting a lot more contact information, hopefully a lot more answers this week, at the end of this week. With that, we'll be doing weekly updates. So in addition to any updates we get throughout the week, for sure, we'll be having an update on Thursday or Friday on the temporary shelter webpage. So also like to remind everyone that we have a sign up right on our website to sign up to receive text and email alerts. So this, our website e-notify system, when we post front page news and when we post anything new to that shelter dashboard, you will receive either whatever you choose in email and/or a text or both. The key to this is it is a two-step process. So once you sign up, you have to go into your email and confirm that you want your email address. So there is a two-step to this process, so just wanted to remind everyone of that. In addition, we got some news, some updates for our municipal aggregation plan. So we're giving a timeline, and we'll be posting this on our municipal aggregation webpage to see kind of a look of the process ahead, but also where we are now. So right now, we're at the DPU filing stage. From there, we'll move on to the bidding stage, and then the public information and notification page. And then finally, the implementation stage. So there's a lot of other things in between those, a lot of community meetings, a lot of press releases, a lot of, a lot of other things. But, you know, at this point, they're looking at like a six-month left in this process. So I just wanted to update the board, and we'll put that on the website for everyone to see and send out a news notification when it's up. And that is all the updates I have.
Okay. Just a couple of comments on the, this issue that we're dealing with on the state. I don't know any other way to describe it. And some of the comments that were made in public comment are very appropriate, and we appreciate them. I said in the beginning, and I'm speaking for me on this, that I'm not going to share speculative information because that's just going to come back and haunt me and haunt all of us. But I will tell you that there are a lot of ongoing meetings. We have made some progress in some areas, and we have not made as much progress as I would like in other areas. There was a meeting today with a number of different superintendents. There are two meetings on Thursday, one being at the site, another one, again, involving the schools. We have made a number, had a number of conversations with them. I don't, I don't want to be specific on the conversations because they may not, may or may not come to fruition. But my point only is, is that this board collectively has been very, very active in trying to focus on the things that we mentioned from the very beginning, which is to keep our citizens safe, which involves public safety, and not compromise our schools. And we've made progress on some of them, and we haven't made enough progress on others. But it is a long way from over. We expect them to be arriving potentially the end of next week, is what we've heard. That's what we've heard. We are not being given a date for whatever reason, known best to them. And in terms of where we go next steps, the one thing I would say to folks is keep in mind that from the schools, which are one of the critical issues here, and I've had multiple conversations, I'm on the school committee at King Philip, and I've had endless conversations with Dr. Dray on this. Once whatever, whatever number of folks arrive, and we've been trying to mitigate that as well, having some knowledge about what we're dealing with will help us better discern the various paths that we have laid out as strategies to deal with it. It's very hard to define a strategy when you really don't know what it is that you're strategizing for. We know that we're getting a lot of people, we know we're getting children, we have no idea how old, what age group, what school, what class, we have none of that information. And we won't know that until whoever's arriving arrives. And if there is an advantage to this, and I say that very reluctantly, having the opportunity to have that information and then have several months to deal with it, knowing that we have a number of different strategies in place and a number of requests with the state to deal with this. It's not as if what happened to Plainville, where they show up on a Tuesday and they're in school on a Wednesday. And so the timing is, however we may choose to see it, at least for purposes of how we go forward, is helping us in that regard. And I think both superintendents would echo that feeling quite strongly, that it'll give us an opportunity to understand the scope and the nature of the issues we have. That doesn't mean that we haven't been thinking through and planning and trying to deal with the state to offset multiple considerations on this. We're not just waiting to see what happens and then planning. We have a number of different considerations on the table here. But they can't be specific, which is why we're not giving that information, because we really don't know which one applies, because we don't know what's coming. I don't know how else to say that. I know it sounds convoluted, but it is more factual to say it that way, because that's exactly what we're dealing with. But comments that were made earlier, believe me, the list is long on conversations we've had and things that we need. And the door is open, we'll see where it goes. I wish I could be more specific, but until somebody puts something in writing, I'm reluctant to say what progress we have or have not made. But we have made some. So that is a very nebulous report, but I don't know any other way to do it right now.
I think it was really accurate.
But it's a daily process, trust me. It is a daily process.
So may I piggyback on that?
Absolutely.
So there's been a lot of people who've come in, people who are, people have concerns, but who also care and who want to have a safe place to just come in and say, I'm worried about this. And I also care about the people who are coming. And I think it's okay for both of those things to be true. It can be both and. I care about the people who are coming and I'm worried for my town. And I think our meetings have given people a safe place to have those conversations. I just wanted to talk about the board for just a minute. Kevin is new. We had the privilege of going to a training together and so to get to know each other as humans together. And he, I also have gotten to know him from the number of people who've come up to me and said, oh, Kevin Roach, and blah, 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 these amazing stories about what a difference he's made in our community. And Jim has given decades of service. And Jim has given decades of service to this town, dec, literally, sorry about that, but literally decades of service to this community, and most of my service has been in.
Making me feel very old.
I know, well, I'm right there with you, though. We're kind of there.
No, you're not.
A lot of my service previous to this has been in schools, in school kind of things, but now in this capacity. What I'd like to say is we are three humans in front of you who love their town so much, and we're so different from each other, but we have strengths that combine. We are working really hard to advocate for this community. We're human, and we are flawed, and like that song, you know, all the curves and all the edges, all your perfect imperfections. We're perfectly imperfect as a board, and I'm confident that if our state can come through with some of these things that we are asking for, we are asking, I think that we'll come out of this strong, Norfolk strong. And so I value the partnership of the board and feel like together, we're doing the very best that we can for this community. And then, I, go ahead.
You unfortunately kind of showed up at the wrong time.
Poor Kevin, oh my God. What is my mistake?
It is a pleasure to have Kevin on the board.
Absolute pleasure.
Would you like to add anything?
No.
You're showing good wisdom.
And then may I say one last thing, completely unrelated? Is that okay with you?
Of course.
Juneteenth. I just read a study that said something like 51% of people don't know why we have that holiday, so I thought I would take one minute or less of your time to explain about Juneteenth. We obviously gained our independence in 1776, but it wasn't until 1863 that the Emancipation Proclamation came out that freed all the people who were enslaved. But some people, because of the remote, it was before Facebook and Google and all those fun things, people in more remote sections like Texas were not aware of it, and it was not enforced in Texas until June, Juneteenth is what they're saying, and so it was the end of slavery, really the end, not the emancipation, but the real end of slavery in our country. But it was also viewed, and is also viewed, if we're not free until all of us are free, it's really our second Independence Day in this country. So it's celebrated as a national holiday, it's been a national holiday for several years, and I just wanted to give a little tiny history lesson, and so there we go. That's all I have to say, sir.
Okay. Kevin, anything?
Well, you and I should at least comment on Community Day for those that have a chance to attend. It was phenomenal. I can't believe how many people opened the window and handed me money.
It was perfect.
As I was in charge of parking, and the money, what a wonderful country, just handing me out the window, tons of money. But anyway, the Lions do a fabulous job, the Holmes family's wonderful, they've hosted that for so many years, just a really good time. We have one picture, I think, Amanda, that kind of highlights the exact meeting right there.
I was hiding by the bouncing.
And I want you to notice the, we both have the equivalent ball spot on the back, which is, but we both got talked into the pie-eating contest. As you can tell, my face is a little bit worse than his, so obviously, you were, you were doing much, you were just lapping. But the good news is, we lost.
Yeah.
That's the good news. There was a young man from the fire department that was committed to win, and he went at it very aggressively, so we just sort of took our time and hoped he hurried. And he did win, which is good news. But the first year they had that, I'm going to say it's 20 years ago, and I was new on the board, they talked me into doing it, and it was a blueberry pie. And a regular, good old-fashioned, bought-in-the-store blueberry pie, and I was committed to winning it. And I did, which was a tragic mistake, because I was on some kind of high for about four hours, that I do not recommend anybody do. Big mistake. This was whipped cream, so they at least provided some solace, but it was a great day.
Perfect day.
Filled up two parking lots again, which is wonderful. Kudos to the Lions and all of the volunteers and all of the community efforts that went into it. Just, it's, and we had perfect weather. It was just a wonderful, wonderful day. So to the Lions, you have, both Kevin and I are Lions, and we were put to work, and it's not, it's not work, it's a joy. It's an absolute joy.
And at Freeman Kennedy in the evening, the food trucks were amazing, the fireworks, oh my gosh, the finale, to beat all finales. There's never been a finale like that finale. It was really spectacular. A perfect day, so thank you. I'm glad you said something, Jim, I'm sorry, I didn't think of it.
Well, I couldn't pass up the picture.
No, I'm glad.
Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Bryant? Or is it Alafon or O'Malley?
Oh, no, we have warrants.
Yes, I know we have warrants.
I believe.
Shall I?
Well, I signed quite a few of them, too, but yes, go for it. You can do it as printed.
I'm sure you signed most of them. I move that we approve the following warrants as printed in the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And approval of minutes?
That's Kevin.
I approve the minutes.
Second.
Of May 15th.
I approve the minutes of May 15th, 2024.
Thank you.
It takes years to get this down, so don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it, it does indeed.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other further business for the board?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us this evening, and I hope everyone stays cool.
Yes.
It was a hot day.